We now resume the meeting. We are now at part two. Part two is on emergency dental services. I now give the floor to Mr. Adam Wong.
Thank you, Chairman.
Paragraph two point six. This strategy of early identification and early treatment. So what does this strategy mean? And what has been done concerning the implementation of this strategy? Secretary?
In the context of dental care. So that's the same strategy for general medical health care. Primary health care means focusing on preventive care rather than treatment. For treating, for treatment of dental diseases, the procedure would be more complicated and costly. We have done quite a lot in implementing this strategy for dental care. For example, we have the school dental care program. We have the outreach dental care program for the elderly. So we are offering oral examination for the young and the elderly to prevent dental diseases. In the next step, we are going to launch the primary co-care pilot scheme for adolescents. The program will offer subsidies to encourage adolescents to get their teeth checked. Now, we are providing dental care for students as early as primary school. We also want to raise the awareness for students that preventive care is better than treatment. We also encourage spending elderly healthcare voucher on prevention. So that's why we have a pilot, pilot reward scheme to encourage elderly people to spend the healthcare voucher on preventive care, including dental preventive care. For every one thousand dollars spent, a five hundred dollar reward would be injected into the accounts.
Mr. Adam Wong, thank you. Two point nine C, self-service kiosk. As mentioned by the secretary in the role opening remark, the government is studying the implementation of electronic quoted disc and online registration platform. But there are still some members of the public who are not tech savvy. So concerning the pilot scheme of the self-service kiosk in the Xinhuang Dental Clinic, you said the kiosks were removed because of difficulties in operation. So are you now distributing quoted disc manually? Is there an alternative plan? I would defer to Dr. Ronald Lam, Director of Health, to answer this question. Thank you, Chan. Thank you, Mr. Wong. Concerning the self-service kiosk, we introduced the kiosk to alleviate the burden on elderly people by waiting. So we are trying out the kiosks in Tung Mun Yan Ho Hospital and the Xinhuang Dental Clinic. However, after a certain period of time, the users' feedback was poor. The majority of the users are elderly people. They are they find the kiosk difficult to use. In the end, we deployed colleagues to stand by next to the self-service kiosks to help the users. But that defeated the purpose because the original intention was to reduce the queue and save manpower. But in the end, we had to deploy additional manpower to man the kiosks, and the user experience was poor. So the scheme was suspended. So for the next step, there are several measures. The secretary has mentioned them as well. Now, previously, we only start, started distributing quoted disc at twelve A M. Now, by July at the latest, we are going to advance the distribution time to eight A M from eight P M. So we don't want to see overnight queues. Now, for overnight queues, the patients are waiting for the same-day quota. Now, we have to balance the factors. So we are advancing the distribution time of quoted disc to eight P M. That will be implemented in July by the latest. Now, the ultimate goal is to implement the electronic registration and disc allocation system. Patients will no longer to get a, we no longer need to get a disc in person. They only have to register online. And the vacancies in various clinics would be available online, and they can make advanced registration. Mr. Wong? Concerning these systems, the reports mentioned, the reports recommend incorporating these functions under the H K, H A Go app. So are you developing a separate system or will the system be embedded under H A Go? Dr. Lam?
Now, this is, under the study, we are going to develop an independent system. We need to engage a contractor to develop the systems. Now, we are discussing with the H A colleagues to find the most suitable options. We don't have the final, a finalized plan yet, but that will be available by the end of this year. Mr. Wong? I think the government already has a lot of apps. You have I am Smart and H A Go with lots of personal information available. Now, recently, there have been a lot of personal information leakage incidents from government departments. Now, if the functions can be embedded under H A Go, we may be able to save costs and reduce the likelihood of personal information leakage. Now, moving on to another question. The preliminary quota distribution system. Now, that's the system where this would be issued at twelve A M. So what is the difference with the advanced distribution of quota? That's paragraph two point one zero. Dr. Lam? Thank you. I would like to supplement on the previous question. We are studying developing an independent dis, distribution and registration system. But as I said, we have the, we have flexibility in this. The point is to have the system ready as soon as possible. So we will work with the stakeholders and also the contractors to see which option is the quickest. Now, Mr. Wong, whether it is I am Smart or H A Go, after the development of the systems, they can be linked together. A lot of platforms are linked to the I am Smart already, so that wouldn't present a problem. Now, there will be separate systems for registration and this distribution. May I invite Dr. Kitty Hui to answer the question?
Thank you. The registration platform is for basic personal information only. That includes the first few digits of the patient's identity card. On the next day, the patient has to go to the clinic to make a formal registration. Now, with preliminary registration, we can't complete the formal registration process, which means the personal data would be entered into our clinical system. In the clinical record system, all the treatment process and symptoms would be recorded. Now, the preliminary registration arrangements on the nights before is just for registering the basic information. The next day, we will confirm the identity and input the data directly into the clinical system. Mr. Wong? Now, simply put, in a few months' time with those systems available, will this issue be resolved?
Sorry, doctor, please wait for my queue, otherwise the camera will not be on you. Now, please, you may speak now.
Now, with the new online system, the patients can enter that information directly, which will be linked with the clinical record management system. And then the user can go to the clinic the next day and receive treatments and there will be no need to confirm the data again. Mr. Wong? Thank you. Two point one three. The Departments of Health has taken many measures to in response to the recommendations made by the Audit Commission. So among the recommendations made by the Audit Commission, which ones do you think there will be challenges in implementing them? Secretary?
Now, we have already done our best to respond to the recommendations made by the Departments of Health. So far, I don't see any insurmountable obstacles concerning a particular recommendation. If Mr. Wong identifies any any insufficiency, and please remind us. I don't see, I don't see any other questions for this part. Other members, you may now ask questions concerning part two. We are now at part two.
Deputy Chairman, Mr. Porter. Now, in the first, in the, in part one, I got a very encouraging answer from the government. Now, the attendance rate is as high as ninety-nine percent. In part two, page sixteen, table eight, may I confirm with the administration? I believe table eight refers to the utilization rates of disc quotas issued for G P sessions. Is that right? Dr. Lam?
Yes, I confirm, Mr. Zhang is correct.
What about civil servants? Do they need a quota or do they simply need to make a booking? Dr. Lam?
For civil servants, their appointments are made mainly via advanced booking. However, for emergency ad hoc cases, they still need to wait. Technically speaking, it's not a disc quota, but there are priorities. Civil servants would get a prioritized appointment if they come on an emergency basis.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Basically, all the dental clinics are at full capacity because the demand from civil servants is high. Now, maybe the figures you gave me were only limited to G P sessions, but not the general utilization rates of the dental clinics. So can you clarify the matter? Dr. Lam?
Table eight relates to the utilization rate of disc quotas issued for emergency G P sessions. That is the patients, the number of patients treated after being issued a quota disc. Okay? So the core issue is how we can determine the utilization rates, the overall utilization rates of the general, of the dental clinics. Dr. Lam? I wonder if this, if I can help Mr. Zhang with this. Now, on the table eight, there are eleven dental clinics. This is the total number of quotas from various designated sessions. Now, in column A, you can see the number of disc quotas issued. Now, that's the number of quota calculated based on the number of patients a doctor, a dentist can see in an hour's time. So in terms of G P sessions, the utilization rate is ninety-nine point nine percent. The remaining zero point one percent relates to when the clinics are not opened, during public holidays or typhoon days. For civil servants, we need to look at the headcounts of patients. First of all, civil servants come on a, on an appointment basis, and there is no disc issued to urgent civil servants cases. And also, there is a wide variety of cases. For eligible persons, the utilization rate is a hundred percent because the nature of cases vary. That's why we are using another indicator, which is the waiting time. Now, if the utilization rate is not close to a hundred percent, the waiting time would be zero. I think there is a blind spot. So I'm not attacking the benefits given to civil servants because after all, that's the responsibility of the government. It's just that the resource is scarce and the waiting time is so long. Can we deploy more resources to G P sessions? That's my point here. So if you look at, um, Note nineteen. Now, for Kennedy Town Dental Clinic, every week there are only eighty-five quota places on Monday and Friday mornings. So will some dental offices be put on standby just in case that there are any walk-in cases from civil servants? And then they will be given immediate urgent care? And as a result, some available quotas cannot be given to members of the public because you have to reserve some dentists on standby for ad hoc civil servants cases. Dr. Lam? I will invite Dr. Kitty, Kitty Hui to supplement on G P sessions. Now, as I said, we have very long waiting time for even civil servants. Because of the shortage of manpower, some dental clinics have to be closed. So under the current situation, we don't think there is any room or surplus resources in terms of manpower or sessions which can be deployed to G P sessions. Now, I invite Dr. Hui to supplement on the number of quota places.
Dr. Xu. Well, the outpatient clinic works like this. We have eleven government dental clinics providing outpatient services, such as Kennedy Town's clinic on Monday morning, forty-two discs, and then another forty-two discs for Monday morning. This Kennedy Town dental clinics will provide outpatient services for the two mornings concerned. For other uh, time periods, they would have to cater for civil servants' dental appointments. For example, after handling the forty-two patients on the, on Monday morning, let's say, they finish at twelve noon, then they will, he will have to provide service to a civil servant whose appointment is at twelve noon. If there is an urgent case for a civil servant, well, then they the service required would be provided. We don't have any quota for civil servants. So the, the time spent other than handling the outpatient clinics for the, for, for the general outpatient will be spent on providing service to civil servants on appointment and urgent cases of civil servants. Since all the appointments are taken up, that's why we have say, we're saying that the utilization rate is one hundred percent. And then the two percent that we have allocated for the outpatient clinics have all, have all been fully utilized. And for other time periods, we will provide service to civil servants. So the service capacity of the entire clinic will be utilized a hundred percent. So that may be over a hundred percent because on some days, there may be walk-in civil servants or family members of civil servants requiring urgent service. Then you have to work beyond your capacity. But that's correct. Since we have a manpower shortage, some consultation rooms in some of the clinics have to be closed down. We even closed down some clinics. For example, if you look at one particular clinic, Monafon Dental Clinic in Saikong, in May twenty twenty-three, it was closed down. But the dental services provided to the public were not abolished because we need to take care of the local population. So on Thursday morning, twenty-one, the disc will be issued. So what are, how are we able to do that? We will assign the dentists and and people from other clinics to work in that clinic on the afternoon, on that afternoon. And they will have to arrive before one thirty P M to pull, to input the registration system of the outpatient. I'm, I'm talking about one P M. And then the one thirty P M dental service will be provided. In the morning, they will be serving civil servants. At the, at the appropriate time, they would run over to the Monafon Dental Clinic for local patients. So given that we have a manpower shortage, our colleague would have to handle sometimes more than a dozen urgent cases. For example, before New Year or after a public holiday, there's even a greater number of urgent patients. So our colleagues are working hard to ensure that the capacity is fully utilized and sometimes even beyond one hundred percent. Also, I hope members of the public will understand clearly that they are, your, your people are working very hard to cope. On the question of issuing the quota disc, it used to be twelve midnight when you issue this, and now it's eight P M. But people still have to go there two times before service. Can something be done about this? Why do we have to issue quota this in advance? It's a question of his, historical legacy. And we, we, they used to queue up very early in the, in the, in the early hours, two A M, three A M. That's why we think maybe people can get a disc and then return home earlier. So the idea was to avoid people having to queue up overnight. But if the supply is outstripped by demand, and if we still insist of getting, patient getting a disc in person, then they will have to queue up. We don't want to see elderly patients queuing for a long time, such as queuing during the early hours in the morning. We understand this is not a desirable arrangement. But we want to make sure that we can issue the disc earlier than midnight. That's just a stopgap measure, but for longer-term solution, we, we do away with the need to get, to queue up in person. That is why we need to go for the electronic system. Well, I don't know when the electronic system can be up and running. You have, you're still in the preparation stage. But from past experience, you know that even for the booking of a football of a sports venue, well, we have experienced a breakdown in the online service. In, in, in one of, one of the particularly serious case, the, the system broke down on the very first day. I know that there's new technology. People can get an advantage by having a sophisticated booking software. Well, I, we all know that the quota system is not perfect. Even for our front-line colleagues handing out rice or mooncakes, there are people who would queue up using plastic bags and others, other items to, to, in the queue. So I think we should learn from the public housing allocation system. That is, we should eliminate unnecessary service requirements as far as possible. Can something be done along this line so that people don't have to wait and queue up for so long? If we want to reduce the queue, the solution lies in providing more services. But resources are limited, therefore, therefore, we need to prioritize. more sys- services, but resources are limited. Therefore, therefore, we need to prioritize and uh refine the sys- operation system. So the uh we understand that uh using an electronic uh registration system can be difficult for some elderly people, but some are can manage. Because uh uh an electronic system can save them a lot of time. It it may be difficult for an elderly patient to utilize the electronic system, but if we give them support in uh using it, then it's better than asking them to queue up overnight. We don't want to see them queuing up overnight. We cannot say that elderly patients can never learn to use the electronic system. But we have an aging population here. Very soon, one in three in Hong Kong will be an elderly person. If we still stick to the old notion that elderly people can never use an electronic system, then we'll have more and more people who cannot have who cannot access uh an electronic system. The fact is they can learn to use it. We are uh equally concerned about the 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 fair fairness of access and whether there there will be people trying to flip the quota. H A Co. Is a is the the system that we can learn from. They have some experience to see uh to ensure that people cannot uh flip the quota this issued. Mister Lu Chong Hong. I know the system is going to be improved. The the time is advanced for the issuance of quotas so that elderly people don't have to queue up overnight. It seems that some people's uh the impression is that you are trying to make it very complicated and difficult to use so that some of them will uh just give up. We need more data in order to monitor the operations. It said that the idea of H has not kept any uh statistics on the waiting time and all whether the performance is up to this required standard. Why is it that the H A has not kept such statistics? Is it difficult to compile such data? There should be a system to gather the necessary information for uh on- ongoing monitoring of the system and for further improvements. Two point two two, I'm talking about two point two two, new on new case appointments. Doctor Lam. For the O M S D Cs, oral maxillofacial services. We are using the H A's clinical information system. So in terms of uh attendance and appointments and whether the case is an urgent or non-urgent case. We have no the system for gathering the information. And actually, uh the H A colleagues are in the O M S D Cs have no dedicated system for gathering the data. We are now working out something with the H A. And we are planning to compile such uh statistics and data in terms of the breakdown of uh conditions, clinical conditions, new case appointment, on the target waiting time, the compliance and other indicators as well as uh performance uh will be covered. We hope that in the coming months, we will be able to collate and devise the necessary system for this purpose. I hope we can get more data so that we can better monitor the performance. I hope in the come in the future, you'll come over and with a good online platform for making appointments. Well, it's not that elderly person can never learn to use a uh online system, but we need to teach them and we offer support for services with an imbalance of prime demand, that is to say, demand outstripped supplied. Then you have people pressing the F Y button on the computer keyboard to to try to get uh a a quota this. It's the old-fashioned way of trying to beat the system, but can we seek some inform uh improvement? For example, if there is insufficient quota quotas, perhaps you can have a drawing lot system. And for people who have failed to get a quota a number of times, they will be given priority in the next round. Can something like that uh be offered? Doctor Ronald Lam. Uh we are now developing the electronic uh appointment system. We are working with the stakeholders to see which contractors should be engaged. Uh so we are looking into the different scenarios to optimize uh the supply of service and how we can ensure that people have have a fair opportunity to access the system. We have an agreement uh with an I N T bureau to work out such a system. And we're working with the H A H A on how to on how to ensure that the the quotas are distributed in a fair manner. Chairman. I hope uh people would understand that faced with a system with a problem of manpower shortage and given the past experience in offering outpatient clinic. We find it rather difficult to devote even more resources for the urgent cases. So the so we think that uh that whichever platform we choose, the number of quotas is not going to be great. I think the focus of our service in the future would be to serve those with who are under privilege and in need.
Thank you. Mister Lo, because of the manpower shortage, so as compared to uh the year twenty eighteen nineteen, the number of disallocated has been reduced by half. And you said that you will try to address the manpower shortage problem. So what specific measures do you have in mind? Are you going to recruit dentists and doctors who have retired to come back? Or encourage those who have emigrated to come back and maybe private private sector partnership programs? And then also, maybe we can make use of some referral service from the private sector? So maybe they are not a direct service provider, but they will refer you to the relevant service provider. So is it possible to go back to the dislocation of forty thousand in number quickly?
Thank you, Chair. We actually have a list of measures being conducted from the micro level. We have tried to conduct year-round recruitment. So we try to recruit more dentists around the year. For from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, every year, every quarter, we will conduct a recruitment exercise. Secondly, as Mister Luke has pointed out, for dentists who have retired, we will reemploy them again. That's a post-retirement reemployment program. There is some progress, but the figures as compared to the uh retirement rate, there is still a deficit. So the number of people we are losing is greater than the number of people we have recruited. Thank you. Mister Look.
Well, Chairman, I think this is a very big service gap here, and we don't have a timetable for bridging the gap. I think this is unacceptable to our citizens. For those who go for emergency dental service, it is not something nice. So maybe they have financial difficulties and maybe they are from the underprivileged groups. So I hope the government will set up a target. And I hope the administration will really set a target and don't say that because it's difficult and I'm not going to set a target and I'm not going to meet it. This is very undesirable. I think administrations should set a target for itself to try to bridge the gap. I know that there are several measures underway, but I think there is still a very big service gap. And I really hope that there will be a timetable for addressing the issue. Secretary.
Well, for Mister Look's point, I want to supplement about target setting. For the opening speech, I have pointed out that there is a manpower shortage and it is deteriorating, which affects the number of this that we can allocate. Also, for the procedure of the provision service has to be changed because of the antiepidemic work. That's why we have been providing less service. So apart from recruiting dentists, uh we are also trying to have enhancement about recruiting overseas dentists in addition to doctors. Well, for the twenty twenty-three policy address, we have pointed out that we will collaborate with the N G Os to try to provide emergency dental service for the underprivileged. Uh the Director of Health has pointed out that our target is that by twenty twenty-five, we will roll out the program. And the number of this allocation will be increased to forty thousand. So I hope members would appreciate that we are not using the existing resources to address the issue. We are actually trying to use a new service model to achieve the target of helping the underprivileged. And we would increase provide an additional forty thousand this for them. Thank you, Chairman.
Doctor Lam, any supplement? Uh no, thanks, Chairman. Mister Look.
Well, thank you for the secretary for his response. For collaboration with the N G Os that will be implemented by twenty twenty-five. Uh for the earlier session, I have pointed out that I hope uh filling will be included as one of the services. So I hope you would expand the service scope. Please plan ahead, and I do not want to see a situation whereby you would say that the N G Os also have manpower shortage and then you cannot provide forty thousand this. Now it is a free service. So for the N G Os, they may charge a fee. Is there a figure that you have in mind? Or will be the charge be subject to the service that a person received? I think this is an alternative uh service, but I don't think it is exactly the service that you are providing.
Secretary. Well, definitely, it will be a co-payment model. Now, the service is entirely free. As I pointed out, because of resources constraints, it is not that desirable. But I think we are quite certain that for the underprivileged who have a need for emergency dental service, we will definitely will provide a large amount of subsidy or maybe a full subsidy for them. So I hope that the relevant scheme uh will be rolled out soon with the details. And also, I hope you will take into account the views from the industry. For example, the organization that I belong to, the Hong Kong F T U, we have some nonprofit dental service. So maybe the user would paying for about twenty or thirty percent of the cost. And then there is a very long waiting time for such a service. So if you are lower than the market price, then that kind of dental service would definitely attract a long waiting queue. So I think for the uh provision of service and the co-payment details, please let us have it as soon.
Next, Miss Carmen Ken.
Well, Chairman, uh I apologize because I'm attending two meetings simultaneously. Maybe I will be asking questions which our colleagues have already asked. I would like to ask questions about part two. For the secretary's opening speech and for the audit recommendations, I can see that um the administration has taken heed of the director of all these recommendations. Uh for example, in early July this year, they would change the time for allocating this from midnight to eight P M the day before. So this has resolved the issue of people queuing starting from midnight. On the expenditure side, I would like to ask about page nineteen, there is a note twenty-one. It says that the cost is about one point one billion dollars, you know, for the queuing. So I would like to know, are we using the same contractor? Will the expenditure be the same?
Um secondly, about the electronic appointment system, uh you're saying that you will try to procure service from a contractor. So do you have a timetable for that?
Well, secondly, after the establishment of the electronic appointment system, will you get rid of the current arrangement of allocating this at eight P M the day before?
Thank you, Miss Ken. Well, for the contractor, if we try to change the arrangement to August, uh to eight P M, so we will try to get a new contractor. The expenditure may be different, but according to the procurement procedures, the work is underway.
So that means after the introduction of the electronic appointment system, then we will get rid of um the system for arranging our staff to allocate this and for the patients to come physically to queue for this. If that's your way of thinking, you are now only at the procurement stage. I hope the administration will try to consult the views of the users.
Well, I've heard that some colleagues have asked questions about uh the introduction of an E system. I agree with the secretary that we should roll it out early, then the user would get used to it. We are now trying to go for E government services. We have H A Go and we have other electronic government service. So we need to provide support for the users, especially now we're going to make use of the N G Os and try to collaborate them to provide support for the underprivileged. So we should also help them to make use of the new E system. For the provision of service by the NGO, they should also facilitate the users to use the E appointment system in future. Uh the elderly may not be very familiar with the latest I T technologies. So I hope the administration will take this into account. So I hope the administration will take this into account. On the costs, the contractors, are you going to absorb the costs within the administration, within the bureau? Or the department? Dr. Lam?
We are now actually conducting the procurement. We have already been conducting a survey, and that will be completed by June. We are now consulting the users of our general outpatient units. So we would collect views on the user model, et cetera. So we would have the results before June. This is point number one. On assisting the elderly to use the E-appointment system, this is not something new. As members may recall, during the COVID epidemic, even for now, these days, we have electronic appointment system for having COVID vaccines. So for the underprivileged and the elderly, if they do not know how to make use of the E-booking system, we would try to liaise with the relevant departments to try to provide assistance for the elderly indeed through our community service. We anticipate that for the rollout of the E-appointment system, we will also collaborate with the relevant government department and use the same model of providing assistance to the needy in the community.
Chairman, for the new service model, well, during the opening speech, the secretary said that it is aimed at the underprivileged with financial difficulties, and we will provide them with dental service. And the quota will be increased from some twenty thousand to sixty thousand. That will be a co-payment. The secretary has explained, and we understand that. But we do not want to increase the burden of the underprivileged. So how are you going to balance the two? Can you share with us now what more on the new service model, the arrangements? Dr. Lam?
Thank you, Chairman. I will try to provide some information, and I will see whether my colleagues in the bureau will supplement. Well, first to respond to Ms. Ken's earlier question. About the expenditure for developing the system and for engaging the contractor or getting a new contractor, there will be, the allocation of this will be changed from midnight to eight P M. So we'll follow up on that. For those underprivileged with financial difficulties, there are actually two groups. First is people who are receiving the old age living allowance. The second one is those who are having the fee remission for H A services. And then also the C S S A recipients. They can try to go for dental subsidy under the C S S A. Well, if they let us know that they have financial difficulty, and if that has been verified by the social worker to be their target service recipients, then referrals will be made by the social worker. So this is the second category. So I would like to know whether my colleagues in the bureau has anything to supplement. Mr. Thomas Chen, Permanent Secretary for Health?
Uh, for the collaboration with the NGOs for the new model dental service, it was announced in the last policy address. And we have been liaising with over twenty-five NGOs in Hong Kong who are providing dental clinic service. Initially, their response is positive, and the details of the scheme are being worked out. And also, there are some difficulties that need to be ironed out. As Mr. Lu has pointed out, some of them may have manpower shortage issues. So for the last two months, we have mentioned that we want to amend the dentist registration ordinance to address the manpower shortage issue. Uh, for the dentistry faculty of the Hong Kong U, we are also trying to increase the number of places. And so the dentists graduating every year will increase gradually. So this will also help release the problem. On the details of the program, we are now liaising with the NGOs. As the secretary has pointed out, our objective, well, actually, I want to explain a bit first. First of all, now a number of NGOs are providing dental service to the public. And they are also serving the C S S A recipients. Apparently, uh, currently, there is a dental subsidy under the C S S A. So if it is a C S S A recipient, the full fee will be covered by the subsidy. And even under the new service model, they will be given the same treatment. Well, for the underprivileged groups that we're looking at is the families who are above the C S S A line. They are not C S S A recipients, and we want to see how we can allocate more resources within our system, the medical system, to help them out. For the current medical system, we have to allocate the resources. And we have to be more focused in allocating resources and more strategic. Uh, we want to provide more resources for the underprivileged groups. But then we got to have a simple system to identify them. So we have different systems and programs. Uh, for example, we have the working family allowance when you also have a dental allowance for the elderly. These factors will be taken into account. Uh, since we're working out the details of the new service model, uh, we want to have more time to discuss with the relevant NGOs. And then we'll come back to the relevant panel to provide you with the details. And I don't think it is appropriate for me to talk too much on this at this stage. And we are also not looking at the dental service for G P sessions. We are also looking at the whole health service system. And we are looking holistically as to how we can help the needy and the underprivileged. For the previous session, we have mentioned that the emergency dental service is provided only by the Department of Health. We only have tooth extraction and provision of pain relief for the users. So after discussion, we want to expand the service. And we want to help people retain their natural teeth by providing filling service. So this will be discussed by the working group. And the target is to enhance the oral health of our citizens and help them retain their teeth. Thank you, Chair. Ms. Kam and Ken?
Well, thank you for the detailed explanation from the administration. I raise these issues because superficially, it seems that the number of discs has decreased. But I think this is actually a manpower shortage issue. So I'm really glad to hear that the number of discs will be increased to sixty thousand. But still, you need the manpower, the dentists, the ancillary dental staff to provide the service. So I heard that we are not just relying on the dentists from the Department of Health. You are also looking for help from the NGOs. So with the new dental model service, you may have fully subsidized service or co-payment service. But you have to make use of the clinics, the dental clinics operated by the NGOs. So now I understand. I understand that the administration strategy is clear. They are not just relying on the D H for provision of future service, because you are now lacking thirty percent staff. So if you just tell us you are allocating more this, this useless. But now it is clear. Now you are trying to solicit assistance from the twenty-five NGOs and the dental clinics run by them. As to who is going to pay, it will be according to the financial situation of the users. Uh, maybe it's totally free, maybe it's co-payment, et cetera. So it is clear that your policy is helping the needy, and you are targeting at the underprivileged. Chairman, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next member, Ms. Yoonis Young, Chairman. Starting two thousand and fourteen, the government has improved its disc allocation mechanism. A number of researchers have been conducted, and also self-service kiosks were introduced. Now it was only used for a year since two thousand twenty, and then they should have been suspended. I, I wonder why there is still a picture of the self-service kiosk taken by the Audit Commission. But that's, but anyway, I see the government's proactiveness. Now currently, some patients still need to queue at midnight or earlier for a disc. That's not the best way to go. Now in the, amidst the shortage of resources, I know it is very difficult to, for the governments to improve the system further. But I think we can learn from H A Go. There is a very convenient queuing function under the H A Go, and that may help alleviate manpower shortage. I like the queuing function under the H A Go. So maybe the Departments of Health can draw reference from this app. The long-term solution should be encouraging the public to switch to the online mode in making a booking. Now that's not just in Hong Kong. Globally, many, many places still have the same issues as we have. That is, um, manual or in-person queuing for health services. Now maybe we can also adopt a teleconsultation service, which was adopted during the epidemic. But this may be the general direct direction the government can take. Can we provide teleconsultation services for dentistry? I see something similar in other places. It will help triage non-urgent cases where patients can tell dentists their problems virtually, and that will help cut the queues. That should be the general trend. That's another matter on publicity and how to actually make it operatable. Now in Chongqing, I consulted a doctor online. That's a trendy thing to do in the mainland. So can the government conduct more researches on the feasibility of providing online consultation services? So that we can cut the waiting time for dental service. Permanent Secretary, Mr. Thomas Chen? Thank you, Chairman. Allow me to supplement on online services. The suggestions were great. The future lies in electronic platforms, whether it is making appointments for operations or getting a disc to delivery of services on virtual platform. For example, drug delivery and prescription, and also tele-medication, teleconsultation. Now we have briefed the panel on health, health services on the, on the E-Health platform, which has been in operation since two thousand sixteen. Now in the coming next five years, we are going to upgrade the E-Health to E-Health Plus. The purpose is to introduce popular functions for the app. Many patients are now using the H A Go app. Now that's a system run by the H A, so it is limited to the services provided by the H A. Actually, the I T team behind H A Go is the same for the E-Health app. So concerning the new functions under the H A Go, those functions will be consolidated onto the E-Health Plus platform as well, so that the data can be shared between the Departments of Health and also general outpatient clinics or dental clinics operated indeed by the hospitals and the private sectors. Patients, covered patients and service providers under the primary healthcare program would be consolidated onto the E-Health Plus platform. Now, to address the immediate issue of long queues, we are working with the Departments of Health to commission the E-disc distribution platform as soon as possible. Now down the road, we are going to consolidate the online queuing or online disc distribution platform function onto the E-Health app, so that under a single app, patients can gain access to various healthcare service providers, including family doctors on the primary register and also NGOs. It will also cover the district health centers in the eighteen districts. So these will all be consolidated under the E-Health platform. Concerning teleconsultation, that is also a direction we are striving after. Now we have spent considerable resources on developing teleconsultation resources. Now, in the future, we are going to study how we can reduce waiting time for healthcare services via teleconsultation. On this application on dentistry, we have to learn from other places. Dentistry is a discipline where teleconsultation is challenging. Now Hong Kong is a small place, and we have very convenient transport. Telecommunication is mainly for reducing waiting time and enhancements of user experience. Whether teleconsultation can be conducted, can be provided for dental patients, we need further study. Chairman, that's what I'm asking for. For teleconsultation, it can operate round the clock and not just cutting down waiting time. Patients can get treatments or alleviation of lesser symptoms. Now with those symptoms can be addressed via advice provided online, they don't have to go to the clinic. We want to make the best use of our resources. If we can allow dentists to work as a flexible schedule, it may help alleviate the manpower issue. Now I'm pleased to see that the government is moving quickly in terms of implementing the electronic distribution, uh, disc distribution system. I would like to hear from Mr. Thomas Chen. What is the timetable like? How many years are we talking about? Five years? When can all these functions be embedded under E-Health Plus? Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Chair. For E-Health Plus, during a briefing for the panel on health services, we mentioned there will be a one point three billion dollars uh, program which will be implemented in the coming financial years. Now it will cover the appointment, online appointment system, and also teleconsultation.
Now one of the major applications scope for teleconsultation will be for. General outpatient consultation. Under the blueprint for development of primary healthcare, an important concept is. A doctor for everyone and a family doctor for every household. Now with an established relationship between doctor and patient. Patients may not need to. Be physically present at the clinic. We will conduct further study. On how to better involve the other medical professionals in the sector. For example, occupational therapists and ancillary healthcare workers. To offer services to the public as a team. So teleconsultation is not just for medical consultation. It will cover all the entirety of the network. Any more questions on part two? If not, I have my own questions. We have talked at length about the shortage of dentists and also the high utilization rate of ninety nine percent. It is all because of the shortage in manpower. Now two point two four paragraph. The hospital authorities, OMSDCs. Provide dental services to inpatients. Now the attendance rate is in table, at table eleven. Now for new case, the attendance rate is eighty six percent for follow-up cases, eighty five to eighty nine percent. It means that some patients didn't show up for their appointment. So why would patients with an appointment. Fail to turn up? Would that, would that cause a waste of resources? How can you ensure that the attendance rate? Is high? I will invite Dr. Tony Cole to answer this question. Now for our outpatient. Specialist clinic, we would triage the patients. Now for the most urgent patients, they would be given first or second priority. And then there would be a stable new cases. Now usually, the urgent patients would definitely show up. For the no-show, those are mainly stable new cases. Because their symptoms or the conditions are stable, the waiting time would be longer. For example, the appointment. If the appointment is not about urgent needs. If the waiting time is too long, the patients may switch to a private doctor. If it is simply. Oral pain, then in two or three months' time, the symptoms might have subsided. So that's, there are similar situations for other specialties as well. But if you refer to the table. We have been increasing the number of quota places for appointments. We expect a small amount of patients. Do not show up, so those quotas would be given to other patients. So that, so as to maximize the outpatient resources. Thank you. Now for patients in. For type, for type three patients. The waiting time may be so long that they have already switched to the private sector. So do you have a mechanism to call the patients two or three days prior? If it is confirmed that they won't show up, the quota can be given to other patients waiting. We have considered this arrangement for various clinics. But since our service capacity is so huge, it might entail a. Extraordinary amounts of workload to call up the patients. So a simpler way is to simply set aside a portion. For quota relocation. Thank you. Any more questions about part two? If not, I still have one more question. Table twelve. United Christian Hospitals. Time lapse between first and latest appointments. Now the waiting time is much longer than other hospitals at sixty three weeks. What's the reason? Allow me, Chairman. The dental services provided by the HA is mostly oral, maxillofacial specialty. So we are mainly dealing with more complicated and serious cases. For most cases, which are not very complex, they would often be referred to the United Christian Hospital. So that's why priority one or two patients. Would be dealt with in accordance with our service pledge within two to eight weeks. Now some hospitals. Have a longer waiting time. We only have, now under the hospital authority, there are only a dozen of dentists. So they would be assigned to treat a particular types of patients. So for example, they would be assigned to deal with neural pain or oral neural pain and so on. During a designated session. But we have seen improvements in the waiting time for new specialist cases. So in the coming months, we are going to review the waiting time among various hospitals. And we hope we can improve the waiting time in the future. Ms. Carmen Ken? Sorry, the speakers off mic. Thank you, Chairman. Now we still have some time left. Allow me to ask some more questions on part two. Now about way forward. The government intends to. Streamline the services provided by the DH and the HA. I wonder if this question has been asked before. If you refer to table two. Now what is the historical background behind this upcoming integration of services? Now for public hospitals, under DH OMSDCs, there are seven. For HA, there are six hospitals providing such services. Now for the general public, they won't distinguish between the management of the hospitals. And they expect consistencies from the services provided. So I wonder if this question has been asked before.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Let me explain. Actually, I have briefly mentioned this. The. Oral maxillofacial surgery and dental services provided in the hospitals are not really dealing. With toothache and general dental problems. These will be served by D of H dental clinics. The OMSDCs provide services to those with a serious neck and head problems. Involving the teeth of the oral cavity such as facial tumor. And the treatment of such or the. Treatment would involve servicing the patient with. Teeth problems. And also the other treatments provided by hospitals may involve. Oral to maxillofacial surgery. Or there are patients with serious heart diseases or who have blood clotting problems. And therefore, their dental problems can only be served in, by a multidisciplinary team in hospital. And not in the dental clinic. The dental problem is not a major problem, but the support from other specialties are needed. And also, there are patients with a serious infection would need to have their dental. Problems provided in hospitals. So they are, we are not talking about ordinary dental patients. Usually, they are acute patients or they are referred by, from, by other specialties. So that they, they, they get the necessary service in an OMSDC in a hospital. As for the differentiation of the two services, it has to do with the establishment of the HA. Some services will be directly provided by the HA. And some others will be provided by the D of H dental clinics. Ms. Khan, any follow-up? I thank the secretary for telling us why some of these services are provided in the hospital. And so we know what the OMSDCs are. Serving these patients. My question is really about the differentiation of the two. Why do we have two branches of service? Because if you have two service units, then there will be some difference in. Service provision or in the collection of data or the standardization of operation procedures. I understand why that, that's, that's the difference. Well, when the HA was established, they took up the oral maxillofacial surgery and dental services. But for other dental services, the D of H will continue to provide them. So the HA would take up the seven clinics in question. The other six remain with the D of H. But there are two most of service. In the future, the two, the types of service will be combined. Ms. Khan, any follow-up question? Mr. Porche. You mentioned the United Christian Hospital. I think I should declare my interest as a member of the board of that hospital. Any follow-up question? All right, the meeting would stop at twelve thirty. So I don't think I should start with the questions on part three. The next meeting would be held on the tenth of May. If, we start at eight thirty, so we'll start with part three in, at. At that meeting. So I thank all the officials and the director for this team for their attendance today. Thank you.